We're live.
Excellent. It's a clock. It's a calendar. You're my...
Can I touch on the lady act, however?
What's that?
Can I touch on the lady act, however?
Of course. This is not going to be a long year. So feel free to go behind. It's Egypt. Oh, that's right. Two thousand. I didn't see the rates come up today. Did you?
No, I know they have a meeting.
They had a meeting yesterday.
Okay.
Oh, no. It's today?
Yeah.
Oh, it was today.
Yeah, so we might get some rumors tomorrow.
Yeah. Sorry, we got about one minute left. One and a half. It was. It was worth playing with. Bling first.
Win?
Yeah.
Blink twice if you need help. The safe word is asbestos. All right. Supposed to time something on my statue. We were waiting. Be illegal for us to start a meeting at six. It was supposed to be for seven.
That's it. It's a code.
All right. Turn this on. Uh, it is seven o'clock. Uh, I will call the meeting to order for the Newfield Select Board for Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Uh, we have a couple budget items to deal with today and just some administrative stuff. So first up is celebration.
Celebration.
All right.
So, um, you have the proposed budget for, um, 2025. Um, we kept it really the same as this year, uh, ending the 9th of 2090. Um, but underneath that, you will see that we did add, um, three other items in there. And, um, when we did need 175th and we, uh, we already, well, 175th budget for last year in earmark, we could have passed those in Warren for goals. We neglected to, uh, I didn't understand that I needed to do the entire amount that we were going to extend. We would spend 15,000, but also we were going to raise more than that and wanted to, um, extend that as well. So, um, we didn't expense, um, quite a few ways. That $7,000 is, um, a thousand, uh, 116,000 is, uh, uh, from Kessler. And the other 6,000 is stuff that I discussed and have held on to. So I'm asking that that budget be added to next year's 2025 budget so that, um, we can repay for that money. Um, and then the other two items are, um, the street banners seem to have been quite a, quite a hit and, um, all that one and that one that needed, um, the one that does, uh, one of the items that's maybe expenses that one. But we'd like to do more of them, uh, not every poll, but, um, like every third poll through town and make it all the way from, uh, Irving Station to Cary Park. And maybe a couple more, um, dozen or some, I would, dozen. Um, and we'd also like to add a holiday in one so that we could, um, take the, the one off and put the other on. When we did the ones for last year, you'll notice that there's only one or two that say 175. Uh, the rest are probably just about 16 or 18 for you. I'm sorry. Uh, 18 for you. So they are able to be used every year along with the lights and, um, holidays over at your one, or the holiday can be, um, more generic, but you're missing of that, uh, the 18 for one and, you know, I don't know, maybe with the bell or the smell on it. But town oriented, um, that would be used. So again, earmark, um, the initial, um, purchase of the 12 plus brackets came to 2280. So I put 35,000 in there because that would allow us to get, um, probably 10 more brackets and, um, the, the banners for those plus the holiday banners.
How many, how additional ones for the ones, did you?
I was thinking 10 is probably all.
10 new ones?
10 new brackets.
10 new brackets with banners? And then how many just banner?
Though we tried to do all the ones that we have up.
Which is how many?
So we just did 12. We don't have permission yet, so, uh, he should just send off a request to Ryan. Um, Tim, oh, sorry, to ask for permission that we can do more than what we are requested.
You mean mounting the brackets?
Yeah. They are, you know, substantial, so hopefully they'll say yes. Um, and then the other thing that I put down there is the 2025 course of lining for the holiday celebration is quite a, it's quite a number, $1,200. So I did put that as an extra expense on the bottom. If you can go in with the holiday celebration, um, line item, um, I probably should have done that. Um, I can change that. So that's the budget.
Questions? Here. Well, you guys are reading. I was just, uh, did you say that you guys raised over with the?
Didn't, you actually raised about 21,000.
Oh, okay. So you're just looking to?
Extend.
So get compensated back for it. The approved budget amount didn't include expenses that they had planned to be offset from revenue?
Okay.
Even though on statute, it has to be offset.
Yeah.
And so it, again, it was more of an oversight. They raised more money. They raised more money than they spent in, in, for those expenses that they were offsetting. But because they didn't include it in their budget, it would have overrun the, run the budget. And so...
We do know that. Yeah.
They, they, and... And, you know, I guess...
That's 24, so it'll be the year.
So these are expenses that individuals have been basically carrying and, um, we need to raise it. Basically, we abhorse it and we'd have to basically approve those expenses because at the end of the day, even though they collect the revenue, it's, it's town revenue and you need overapproval to expend it. Okay. So that's, that's what happens.
Yeah.
People were very nervous. Yeah. So we have just one other thing. Um, as we stated, it's been 23 years. We'd like to...
What?
Go out with it.
Go out with it.
But we'd like to formally say that we're finished as of the end of 2024.
So at the end of the year, after the holiday celebration, will you relax?
Yes.
You said it was about 10 years.
Yes.
Yeah, I said you're headed to the 30.
Who's going to take your place, though?
I don't know. I don't know. I know that there's a lot of, um, people in town that will have some really great ideas and will love to share and, you know, change things up and think that'll be amazing, bring that energy up.
Well, I, I carry a conflict in this, but I have to say, it's been a great... 25 years, I think you guys both and everybody who's participated in the events over these, you know, quarter century here, pretty much. Um, and the 175th was really just awesome.
Just, yeah.
And, um, I, I certainly think you guys speak on behalf of this board and, and hopefully everybody else at town to say, you guys have done a tremendous job. Um, the town would have been a worse place if you hadn't been serving here for so long. So thank you very much.
Well, we, we really do believe that the celebration committee is key to keeping this happening together, uh, having, remembering that, you know, where they live and, and what it's all about. So I hope that people go pick it up and that will carry on.
You have provided activities for all the children, which is a real big goal.
You mean, you're looking forward to sitting on the side of the road watching them?
And I'm on for this time without our work. All we're on.
I don't think a lot of people realize how much time you put into it. Me myself, you know, my son was younger, yeah, we'd go pass them, they'd watch, okay, that's it, done, you know, you're planning all year. So that's really great. Thank you.
We love doing that.
We do.
That's why we've done it for so long. It was a bittersweet and hard, hard decision, but we're giving them less than we could and all that, so we went with it. It has to take a lot, that must be the one. But it also seems like the right time to, to pass it on to somebody else. I did. It was really right after the, um, 125th, a couple years after that, that we took it on, so. That's it.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. They're too proud.
All right. Well, I'm great.
I'm great. Hey, so can we talk about the budget? Then, um, I'd love to talk about utilities, how did it get more money by when we started the recon station on that? And this came up, something tricky brought up, and we, uh, we had a repair we're talking about. And then also give you guys an update, quick update on the project, maybe asbestos project that we're working on, on our line, what we're seeing, and then some things that happened. Okay, so, uh, what you guys got, uh, there's our increases, uh, it's getting over, um, if you go to the page, the back page here, the old page, it shows the increases in salary that we're talking about. Yeah, it's small, sorry. So Brittany's our director, we did increase there, Corey also library. Uh, Lauren Bradley just started with us. Uh, she started in winter?
End of July.
End of July. Uh, so no increase there. We have, we're looking for children's libraries. I think we really wanted to increase services. Uh, that position has not been closed yet. We've come real close, two times. Uh, so that's, that's, uh, we're looking for, uh, yeah, the salary in the category. So that's how it's not accurate if you look at the salary page, the smaller page, that the accurate salary, so we need to increase on that other page, uh, on the way to there. Anyway, those are the increases we're looking at salary for that, uh, for our position.
So the correct number is the 62744?
Yeah, 62744. Sorry, I don't like it. I got one less.
And, and let me just confirm. So you have recagulated the social security and Medicare that will follow?
Yeah, a lot of you do have that.
Yeah?
After you get some of that. And then we had substitutes, um, uh, coming in periodically, not so much, but a couple of you guys have been taking us. So we've had that and holiday, I think some time for mother at some points, but they have helped me out. I don't know if someone's saying or saying that, but that was just obviously that cost competitive somewhere, it's what comes with that, all we did. And then for all the other things, really colorful repairs, we can, left alone, we'll touch on repairs payments, everything else is left alone, uh, consulting, I think you guys, uh, Martin probably would know. Uh, we have put, uh, Scott Campbell on, $75 an hour. He comes in and helps Brittany just on policies and things very infrequently now, but it's great that he works over stratas, uh, uh, for a record there. He has a lot of library experiences. Just also then, there are a couple teams, like, hey, here's a, uh, a con, a conflict we should go to. Here's, please contact that station. They did help and we want to keep that up and it's good to help Brittany. But a big shout out to Brittany, China, like, they're doing a great job for us, setting up for disposition, add their products left. Our number of continues, continuously increased and programing what we've been doing, um, I believe is we're getting back to a pre-COVID number, which is great. More engagement, more new people, programing has been outstanding, feedback has been outstanding. And if you guys need it, then, then as we move forward, we definitely have, we've really done a great job managing our brick books, getting that up to more of the speed so we can, that's it. So with that, one of the questions of Brittany is, when we got the brick books, I had a pretty simple question, who pays for the heating oil? Who pays for that? So the extraordinary is for you. Where's that money coming from? So we did that in a trust, a trust fund. So it was originally set up through the Melon Fund, Paul Sisters set up. That was the prepaid for all the library in total, when I don't need the library, now all that established out of that. There was an RSA, something we, the last two decades, which means that the town was responsible for paying the salary and stuff, right? So that one came out of that, uh, came out of the town board, it was set out of that, those funds. And what had happened for many, many years was all that, all the dividends that came out of that, I mean, those went right back into that fund, so it grew. Then another one that came about, um, 12 years ago, remember, where it said, you actually have to take those, those, those interest rate gate out of that fund and expect. So we began, we gave the 3,000 bucks, that's depending on where it goes, we gave that one back from our fund every year for the fund, trust, trust, so it's a check from the dollar fund, we get that. So it's funny because that's where the ones, they cut up. Because at the end of the year, we're almost here, about to be going up, though, but we've always just kind of, Brittany, Jack, and the general fund for heating oil.
How much have you been spending on the year?
So I have, you know, I look back over the last couple of years. So total for the year, 25 hundred bucks for heating oil, right? We do use, wherever the town hall uses, we get to use same contract, right? So in terms of utilities, heating oil, about 25 hundred bucks, about five, 16 per quarter. I broke the down, sometimes you need that, 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 that fifth hit, right, depending on the season, but we lose that, not cheap. Warren store, about 280 per quarter, so that's that in the quarter. So that's about 11 hundred bucks basically.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah.
So that's Warren store. So if you look at that, you know, that would be 37 hundred bucks here for those two utilities. Electric, I can get a chance to run through, uh, I have to go back to the old bills for the year, because that we have, the only thing we have right, deduction rate from our, our account, we want to make sure we put it some, so we just keep that kind of straight. Okay? Uh, that's just, you know, cable internet, we use through town, that bill does come with you. You guys can change that. And then air conditioning, which is our new favorite subject because ours died and it's easy to replace, because we're finding out it's undersized, it's out. 20 years old, we find it.
Mm-hmm.
But we kind of, definitely along with this center and, and so, and I just earmarks in my mind, 45 hundred bucks, I have never replaced an air conditioning system, so we're getting a quote from them.
Maybe with that, you might look to get a heat pump where it's AC and heat and assist heating the unit, heating the building itself, uh, which might help with your oil bill.
I talked with, uh, Wallace's supply today and he's got, I tried it on the model, actually did look at, it's pretty sure it's undersized, we're going to be able to bring that edition, I'm sure the edition, and a couple of those fast, uh, some of them really high, I say the active, but, you know, the AC, so that's what we're standing at, I figure, we know what it's all about.
The furnace itself is also important, and we've kind of kept that going and did the addition. Main reason the addition is the size of the business is the kids who are more than the furnace. And as a space, it's better, uh, working. We, you know, a couple hundred bucks a year probably gets certain storms and going out and it's less secure to do something.
He did actually, Eric, he mentioned he was, he was, he was using his own, so, uh, it's a major problem.
And it'll assist it, a little, you know, if it's... I mean, I don't know exactly the, the savings that you get out of it, but it would, I believe what it does is it creates like, uh, ambient heat and it, uh, it's way that the furnaces work so much harder, the oil.
And it doesn't...
What's that?
It doesn't burn it?
Oh, yeah. It extracts the warm air from the frigid cold air, which sounds crazy, but it's amazing. And it'll activate the...
So that is something that, but the whole idea was, I thought the question was great, where are we paying for the shortages? We can, you know, we'll prove this money, you know, we can, again, how would markets do? I'm particularly, $12,000, we'll give $12,000 in our general fund, something around there, that something comes up for a protection, but, you know, the thing last thing that came up from the town was the oil, our oil, uh, container, fixed at, probably the last thing I remember, those are years ago, towns, again, that's really, it's, it's, $15,000, I have that.
What did we get the order for this year? What did we support some of the bid?
From last week? So it changed to 70?
Yeah. So we, but like I said, Michael, it was bringing us a great question. Well, if we had money, we could spend it on pro work, true, like we do. So the question is, you guys, hey, I can lay over, I can do the other, we put together the whole, and see what that increases on top of what we have. Right? We could face this in eminence, you know, as town agents, utilities, town building, do more, question to you guys. Uh, I don't know, it's just, that's just whatever. Get more numbers, put it together on the spreadsheet and show you guys. But is that something that makes sense to you guys? We would use, hey, we have an offer to do that appropriate.
Well, um, we have a bunch of issues here, so let's, let's take them one at a time. Um, let's start with the budget itself. You guys have a question about the budget?
Go ahead.
Um, so looking at your fiscal 25 request, so if I plug in the 62744 and where that salary line is. Um, I get a 79616 as a bottom line, not a 76340. My question is the groundkeeping line.
Should be zero.
It should be z, that's what I'm assuming.
Zero.
So if I, if I do that, I would come back to the, you know, basically 76400 is, okay, that's what I thought because, uh, groundskeeping, I believe, comes under the town groundskeeping contract.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that, that's the one big question I had about the budget number. So your, your bottom line number here right now is the 76, call it 76400?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no.
I had, yeah.
No, no, that's fine.
Less three grand. Yeah, the groundskeeper.
The groundskeeping number really should be zero. That's done through the town.
It's 73.
No, no, it's 76400. The 76400 is correct? That's, they, they did not do a sum?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah, yeah. Okay. So second question I have is, uh, so, uh, we'll look at, we'll look at the, the oil, water and sewer issues, um, in terms of town versus library payment. You're currently paying those out of what fund?
Our debt.
Which is paid, wait, out of the town budget, general fund?
No, that's, that's money from our dollar fund, so that's...
That's what I, so, okay, so this is, this is one of the library trust funds?
Correct.
All the utilities?
Yes. Except the...
Right. Okay, we get it through the town. Uh, okay. Last question I have is, you talked about the AC replacement. Do you have any idea what it's going to cost?
He couldn't, I asked about that, I told him, I need you coming up.
Okay.
But because he thinks it's going to be, uh, upgrading the size of it, he wants, he wants to, let him, so he wants to make it, so.
Sure.
It's going to be bigger before you have to ask him, but what that, um, suit for dollars?
Do you guys plan to warn her about it? Well, as a capital expense, you don't typically put those into your operating line. Um, but I, I'm just throwing it out there as, you know, what your thoughts might be.
All right. You were going to go to maintenance?
I think it's going to be five to ten grand.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, which is not really reflective of regular maintenance. It's, it's a, it's a capital line, so I, I just suggest that, but, you know.
And you are...
We have time to think about it.
And you are going to put more bits of this?
You're going to put it out to a bit?
All bits and three bits.
Um, okay. Any other questions? Last question I have. Last question I have on the budget is that, uh, I saw Scott Campbell, it's just basically first quarter, you expect him to be done at the end of the first quarter?
Now, it's been thirty hours since.
Oh, okay, so, no, no, that's fine, I, I'm not worried about the number per se, I was just curious about whether you expect that at the end of the third, first quarter, he's done. But what you're saying here is, it's thirty hours across the year.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I don't think you got it there yet. But it's been sure.
All right.
I'm covered with what we've talked about.
You're good?
Yeah. So I, I mean, I don't have a reference point, how much is it all going to go up, uh, overall, if we're taking on, are we taking on utilities then, or?
Uh, I don't know, we'll, we'll have to, as we go through the budget process, I mean, this is the first proposal, we'll, we'll have to step out.
Oh, you can do it, Matt, I'm going to be quick.
Uh, but you're, I can tell you right now, if we, if we, if we were to cover the utilities, you're talking about, uh, nine percent increase versus a four percent deal.
Town would replace it, option.
What's that?
If you replace it, you're with it at that, I don't like the question.
We'll take it.
It's a good question, honestly, I can't question it. Because we use money for program. And it's very great. So, that's utilities, AC budget, project update. So, we are, so we've got everything aligned, we're looking to do the marine mediation, uh, starting the eighteenth, I want to say, November, but just a week before Thanksgiving, we're going through Thanksgiving, right? So, starting then, uh, the first people they come in, movers, then you guys mediate, we're going to give them through Thanksgiving, through the next week, and the first week of December, right? Uh, and then, we'll have painters come in, then we have garden install, then movers and the desks come back in. And then it takes a little bit longer, what's that? Desk comes back in, you have to get the countertops, because they're going to be, they have, from, from a countertop, and they have to get where they have to, install the desk, and the countertops, and the, and the, and the, so, really, the, from, second last week, you know, November, through December is our plan to have library shut down. And I, I'm pretty confident, a great idea to have me do something, or do lots of this case, and you can talk, when you talk about you, and others, it's great.
Um, yeah, so we're hoping to use, just the side office, come over there, to set up this.
This side project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Station's off, and then, we might not have the programs, I mean, in person, the counters, talking to Sue in here, but, um, that was close, that was shocking, yeah, I'm interested in, um, our main questions are access to the building in hours, because we won't, obviously, keeping the same hours, the library, and hours. That doesn't matter if you're not circulating anything, um, so, just so one knows what's in place for access in the building, and you get keys, you can get a line with the staff.
What hours were you guys thinking?
Dunno. I think what we can do is put together.
I guess the real question is, were you thinking about evening? I assume not, if only because, you know, there are meetings here, like board planning, whatever it is. Yeah. Concentrate information.
No, only if you have a program, it's, only beyond the, their power.
And, and you're looking at about a two-week timeframe, get this done?
No, it's, 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 it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, six weeks, six weeks? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking that, uh, it came through Thanksgiving, no, okay, six weeks.
Where's, where's the?
All, except for the vision.
Oh, okay.
That's entire, too.
Okay, so, six weeks, okay, that's a little, uh, more extensive, but, to be honest, I don't see why that we could figure this out.
Yeah, I agree, so we're having a staff meeting next week, sit down, right? Yeah, and let everybody, and let everybody know, here's our agenda, come up by here, what kind of program, what we do, not circulated votes, we just can't, the votes are being moved, so that's how, right? So, what other creative things, we all have the town, research is going, obviously, we've got curators working, curators that are working, what we do, but we've been using this sort of program as well. So, that's what it's called, anyway, so, then we just go, they repeated that bathroom, I think, there's obviously the town meetings like this, the one big event is the hallway celebration, that's on Saturday, but we did, we did craft that anyway, so that kind of works out, but, just kind of, we're trying to figure out some, craft it in, so if you come back, you guys, and Sue, and say, here's your calendar, curious what we can, maybe we could offer, because we want to keep offering services, that's our big thing.
I, I tend to think that, you know, this is mostly derivative, having access up here, the curators, I don't think that'll be a problem. Uh, you know, town hall basically opens at eight-thirty, uh, being open this, allowing your access to any time after that, two to eight issue. Uh, I think, you know, the only question is, how long would you go to the evening, the afternoon and evening? So, just think about that when you're planning it, but we'll, we'll figure it out. It's a small town, there's no reason, I can't figure this out. Okay? Um, so, with respect to the asbestos, we signed the contract last year, you, uh, you, we need to.
You guys need to sign that.
Sign this, yep.
You said it back to me, or you said it right to head, I don't care.
Oh, I'll, I'm going to head it to you in a second, I'm sorry.
That would be great.
Unless these have that.
So they, so your asbestos keeping is they stay at least then give it work and then they say, so if you can't advance. Then at the end, they have their part to do some testing. If they say you're following, that's it, that takes over. Sometimes I go in, nobody else will come in until that's done, make sure that happens. But everything's being moved out, like all votes, everything. Reason why we're getting paintings, it says tape stuff, the ceiling, the tape stuff. I think it like E D S has been up there. How much money did we uncover this year this quarter?
Nine thousand and some odd dollars. For the asbestos?
For the asbestos?
Yeah. I think it's nine thousand three hundred bucks or something like that. It's in our conferences.
Yeah.
Still there, because we haven't spent much yet. And of course, basically what, a hundred and?
Hundred bucks.
Hundred eighty-five or something. Budget wise, it shouldn't be an issue. We're just using the number.
So hopefully, everything is smoother.
Any other questions?
You good?
Yeah. Alright, I'll make a motion that we authorize the contract provided by the library for the asbestos remediation.
I'll second that.
Second by Hope, all fair.
Aye.
Now, they asked for deposit, but I don't remember what says in the paper, if there's says in there.
Just to have, still only got to check.
None.
Yeah, I'll leave it in conferences. Like I said, this money is already covered, it was approved last year, so any issues? Cool. You gotta get over and find us. Alright.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Landing, I hear.
Alright, let's do landing.
Let's do landing. Uh, now I wish I could tree, got that, just ready, I don't think it's me that, something's out. That I got done, I do need, there is this drainage problem we had. Uh, I know Brian dumped some dirt, it's running a little bit, but coming next year again, I'll talk to Brian. Want to put some more rock, but I do think it did show up, I'll show up in the road, it's like, like, it's up on River Avenue, water comes down around. It's just missing the drain.
So just to clarify what's going on there, that road is planned to actually be basically regraded so that the water flow is going to go where it should go, which is into the drain.
Okay, second part of George's.
Yeah, up, up on River Road?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, exactly. So there is a plan in place to regrade that road, regrade, repave that road. And part of that will be to correct the water flow to get it where it's supposed to go, into the drain. So, you know, I mean, if there's, if there's another washout, we can address it. But, you know, we're not going to do major work there until we get that. And that's on, it's in the plan.
Hundred?
Uh, I think that's on this year's, next year's roads.
Oh, and lastly, I know we asked, I'll land, I know we asked for the regular means, like can use and things, I'm gonna go down, just because we need it there. I'm gonna act like I go, take all the means and start calling the people, just because I think there's some, like, a lot of people ask me to put stuff there. But I mean, it's just such a backlog now, I don't have one. Some people just need it there.
Yes. I was surprised how it's into that rack that you used this year.
Yeah.
I mean, it tripled in, in number of votes down.
Yeah, but it's like, hey, I'm just gonna go here. That's cool, but then people, why if you just votes can't use it, because somebody else signs the hand.
That's your responsibility, Mr. Wayne.
They decide that.
Looks good.
I can't cover anything, that's it.
Any, any questions, library and landing?
I'm gonna search for the contractor on HVAC system. Somebody talked.
Oh, good.
We had to listen, we did all this. Yeah. Do you want to talk about? Do you guys have a last contract here for the building?
Honestly, it's hard to find. Um, I'm like, if you tell just a small job?
They're unconnected, I mean.
Look, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna, you know, proffer services here, but if you want something done, well.
Well, you don't like, once you've got, I guess, I guess, Alice, or whatever, I don't think it's like a person.
Yeah. But we don't have anybody like on contract here, I'm not bad. Why don't you guys do it?
We've heard the library, yeah.
You get a nice. Yeah, yeah, no, they won't.
It'll be a tent.
Yeah, exactly. Alright, well, thank you guys, I appreciate it. Alright, um, we have the administrative board in our meeting tonight, uh, health officer. You should have a copy of the nomination for, for health officer Bobby Kelly is stepped up to be re-nominated as the town health officer. Any questions, any concerns about re-nominating Bobby for a job?
No, three-year.
Um.
I love him for it.
I'm not sure.
Because how, what did the email?
I think that's correct.
Was it ours, any, any spark?
Yeah, something.
Someone, yeah, just so we include that again.
Um, so, I mean, you know, he's trained quite a lot, so is a volunteer position here, but.
I'm good.
Alright, alright, I'll make a motion to approve Bobby Kelly for health officer in here. Second by Hope, all fair. Aye. Just need to join me, come on. Oh, of course. Um, next up, MS-1. So you should have a copy of the MS-1, which is the, uh, which is a statement of the valuation of town property prepared by our assessor, Ron Wood. Um, the town valuation of property has gone from, oh, about four hundred and fifty million last year, I think it's four fifty-six? Four fifty-seven million, so it's, it's approximately one and a half percent increase. Mursa, you're over here. Uh, we report this to the state, obviously it drives our tax rates and how much tax gets collected. Any questions about the MS-1, information provided, what it is for? No? I'll make a motion that we approve and sign the MS-1 of the summary of the void.
Later.
Second by Hope, all fair. Sorry. No, don't worry about it. That's it, that's, that one's an easy one. Uh, put select board here for your positions.
Oops, shit.
I signed that over. No, that's alright. It's, it's not that technical.
Statement of justice.
Exactly. I signed it. The sign of the cans first.
Yeah, scrubber.
Well, you're driving, you got probably can read it anyway. Um, so, uh, one item is not on here, but has just come up in the last day or so. So, um, Jason Ward, uh, down on Pleasant Street, um, has challenged the decisions of the town zoning board and the town of New Fields regarding the decision on the destruction of the right on that property. He has filed a complaint with the Hillsborough Superior Court. And, um, there will be some period of discovery and everything else. Doesn't, uh, there's no formal decision here on that case, it's just a case to file, but just so everybody's aware of it. Um, in your packet is basically the filing itself, so you can look at that at your convenience.
So what's the, what's the issue that the setbacks and setbacks?
So, yeah, the main two issues that the zoning board determined, basically disqualified the construction that he proposed was the setback issue, as well as requirements for, uh, the, the maximum lot coverage of impervious surface.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, he's challenging the way that they made that determination. The zoning board has a very particular process that they go through, it's actually required by state statute. And there are five criteria that they evaluate variance requests. Um, they determined that, uh, his requests did not reach the threshold for providing variance. And so they denied it. Um, and so he's taking the town court, which is his burden. So, um, again, this is just information for that.
Uh, I got a question, a comment on this.
Yep.
So this weekend, I started somebody at the town and they told me about it. And I went, hmm, okay, so kind of caught it from the other guard. Then I talked to Sue about it and she forwarded to us that email string where Derek notified the town at the second. He sent it to Sue and answered distribution. That, that to me is inefficient and it kind of keeps us in the dark a little bit, so that I had to Derek send it straight to members of the board. And I think it would be more appropriate on the air situation such as is that the information comes to the board members who send it inside first, through Sue. It adds to her report of votes and it's just one step on the path that I don't think we need to take.
That's fine. Um, I, I, again, I don't, I don't think there's any full necessary process in place.
I totally understand, but I mean, it's, it's pretty autonomous issue.
Uh, yeah, and, and I, and, and not, not that I think you're wrong here, but I, I think the rationale for Derek was basically knowing that Sue is gonna have to gather the information for compliance of the discovery request associated with it.
Yeah, I totally understand.
Yeah, and I think that's why Derek went that route, but I, I have no problem with you making, making a note of that today.
And I did, and I did email Derek about why he did that, this is why, this way, pretty much do it all the time. And I think it would be more efficient and more open and provide better knowledge for the members of the board and the other boards to receive that information straight from Derek instead of from Sue. So I will, it would be consent of the board, I'll let it descend it on to Derek.
Yeah.
Where to change that protocol.
Absolutely. Keep us in the loop, right? Um, the other issue, uh, that I'm agenda, but it's actually related to Derek itself, is, um, it's kind of related to this, uh, for the audit, uh, we need to inform our auditors that now that Derek is basically a litigation and potential claim against the town. So you should have a copy of the letter that will go to the auditors, basically informing them so that they can include in the audit, uh, you know, basically a notice that there is any litigation.
Is it in the package or is it?
It should be. I, again, this is something that, that came up basically, it should be a two-page letter. At the top, I'm, oh, okay, here, take a look, I think a quick look. Um, it's, again, it's just informative for our auditors. Uh, that Derek told us that we need to sign and send. I think that's the last of the four items. You good?
Yeah.
Sign and get that off. Um, alright, so we have, uh, prior meeting minutes. Keisha had sent around minutes for the September twenty-fourth meeting. Keisha, I had one small change, and that is on page two.
On which one?
Um, September twenty-fourth. Under the audio system section, second paragraph, uh, it wasn't Hampton, it's Northampton. I know, small thing, but, uh, but that's the only other change I have.
Then I have a change on the A O S update, Keisha.
Yeah.
First paragraph, I hope we discussed this earlier conversation, Fire Chief Buxton regarding the enhanced life support program. And it says, Fire Chief Buxton plans to chair a committee. Actually, Fire Chief Buxton said there will be a chiefs committee, I'll give you a copy over here. There'll be a chiefs committee of impacted fire department, community and communities that's being initiated due to the loss of ALS. So just clarifying that aspect.
Is he chairing?
No.
I didn't.
He's just, he's gonna be out. And then there was a patient coming against.
Alright, any other changes or items? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Second by Hope, all fair. Uh, you have regular expense, you can look at that at your leisure, there's no need to review that now. Um, just one other item that I, I, regarding the noise monitoring that we talked about last meeting. I have reached out to a couple independent noise monitoring companies. Uh, they're gonna provide me with quotes, I basically described it, we're looking to, just happened to get a couple of events. Uh, you know, fairly straightforward, fairly simple, uh, multiple quotes, obviously. Uh, but this would probably be for the next year, given that, you know, we're gonna have to provide it for this. Uh, so hopefully we'll get some information, I think in the next week or so. And so we'll be able to incorporate it into the budget for next year if we want to.
And I do have some additional knowledge of this one.
Yeah.
So research on that, so as far as the cost being incurred by Burner Family Car, that they're prone to be culpable. Uh, it would involve a cease and desist order after which kind of violation of the terms will be incurred. It will incur a responsible way for, there's more options on that Derek's exploring. As far as the town, they get the cost.
Okay.
Or the violation.
Um, alright, we'll have to address that obviously once we get the information.
But that should, they get some of that.
Yeah. Alright, any other matters that you guys have?
Uh.
No.
Another open item was the Woxmo's signed complaint.
Yeah, I know you were looking for that.
Uh, I had a long conversation with Derek about that. And the issue with it is that it does not meet, as was pointed out in the complaint from one September, it does not meet the setback requirements under section four point six. We have that form of complaint, so we can't ignore it, but, uh, we talked about it and we both brought the idea of them applying for the variance, giving them thirty days to apply for the variance and the Z B A would, and he expects that would probably be approved readily easily. Just because it's a non-conforming building, it's been on the non-conforming buildings, so he doesn't think that will be an issue. So I think that resolves that issue, it's given the guidance that comply with the town permits, you're gonna have the variance.
Go, well, just go before the evening.
Yeah.
And we're pressing. Oh, same as any of the business without.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I appreciate you looking at that. Um.
Couple more things.
Yeah, yeah, go.
Uh, so I went and looked at the Conservation Commission minutes and there are none, Keisha, did you find those? Did they ever show up?
I haven't had my system.
Yeah, so there's nothing posted online from July, August, or September. And the reason I was looking for them is, uh, David, who's doing the minutes now?
Um.
Forrest?
Yeah, I think so. Well, Laurie was doing it.
Yeah.
Laurie, uh, I think Allison was going to do them when she could be there.
Yeah.
So she may have the.
I was just a little concerned about them not being posted.
Yeah, I was worried that they.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because, you know, Chris has resigned from the board. There's an opening on the board that needs to be addressed. So that's something we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know, when's your next meeting, the sixteenth or something?
Yep, uh, the twelfth, this coming Monday would be the twelfth.
No, tenth is Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Yeah.
So it'll be twenty-first.
Can you reference that, the lack of minutes on the actual meeting? Is that, is that?
Oh, yeah, my, my.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Mark, Mark would be there.
Mark would be there.
I wasn't there last.
I talked to Jeff Buxton about the ALS update, they're having their national meeting on the ninth with the regional chiefs. Uh, they're forming their committee.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
October ninth?
Yeah. Uh, form their committee, set their goals, objectives, and move forward on that, and he will keep me posted on that. Next thing I had is, I drove by three ninety-nine, I was passing six, we own that, except for the freight recovery. And it looks like Cal out there, I don't know whether we want to have it mowed.
Uh, I would say, uh, probably not do that before the end of the year, but budget right now, we're, we're pretty tight. I'm not sure that.
So then we leave any point, that's fine, because you still have a lot of everything, but there's still, there's still two vehicles out there.
Yeah.
Campers being there that needs to be disposed of.
Yep.
And I think we have a responsibility to the butters to at least keep it mowed. I mean, not like somebody goes across the road, for me it's a lot.
No, maybe, maybe something we can get incorporated into our contract with, you know, for the town properties as, as mowed.
So just, just. As far as, as far as the vehicles go, I mean, can you simply post a notice for someone to take them, pick them up? Probably paying for.
I don't know, I don't know if anyone, Mursa, I don't think Mursa anything is any interested in.
I, we should ask him, but if not, then I, yeah, we can easily post him.
Instead of paying to.
Somebody will. Yep.
So you want me to pay his own suit, see if he wants to?
Yeah, I, just, just see, see if he, if he wants to haul them off or not. And if not, we'll, we'll just do something to dispose.
There's a big camper out here, I'm sure you've got too many lice.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Been sitting there for a lot. Uh, last thing I had was the, came in to the tree cutting behind the town hall today.
Yeah, I saw that.
Got that all squared. Yeah, got that all squared, we cleaned that up, they also cut back, they call them the, on the corner, so they cleaned that back, so it makes one to twenty-five foot right away.
Yep.
So hoping it's that Turner coming up out of there, uh, so that was taken care of and that's nice to have off of this. Gee, do you want to get some stone put in there, or between the blacktop and the mud and the fence down there, is that correct or not?
It was mentioned at some point, just because it gets so mudy, I could talk to Brian, it won't take much.
Uh, that's all I have.
That's it. Alright, uh, is there a problem? Great. No? Alright then, uh, I will set seven fifty-four P M, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting of the slide board.
Good.
Second by Hope, all fair. Aye. Thank you, guys. Are these all signed on?
I got it.
Was that all signed?
Oh.
You got it. Note to self, frame of pen.
David, I thought you were just here for a soon, they didn't come.
What's that? This is a, a. I gotta shut up. Just hit the button off.
That way we can start square.
Yes. I don't want to say anything.
I'd say usually those square things. Well, this is your.
Is that fair?
No, not much.
How's the other? Ah, really?
Too much for others.
Oh. No, no, I was gonna say. Yeah, that's, that was.
What were you doing there?
When something starts arriving?
Uh, per chief, I said, we said there will be a chiefs committee.